All right, at 6:32 we'll go ahead and probably meet in order. Public comments, we don't have anybody here, so we'll move past that. General reviews, anybody have anything they want to add? I'm going to move the warrant articles up to, I'm going to switch the first two on to five, so that warrant articles go first, so that Josh doesn't have to step around all night and listen to us. Anything else we've changed, had subtracts? All right. Warrant reports were submitted, so we've got those in the drive, they can be posted as well, so we're not going to rehash them here, because we've got stuff to talk about. So you'll go right into it. Look at the, first look at the warrant, it's here.
Hey, good evening. For the first one, we would ask to deposit our annual $155,000 into the school building trust fund, and then we would look to withdraw $260,000 from that fund. $20,000 would be for replacement flooring District Y, which has been an annual ask for some time now. Next, we would ask to withdraw $140,000 for the roof on the Pembroke Academy Gymnasium. That roof is currently from 1999. And then new to this would be to ask for $100,000 to replace the glass and roof on the Pembroke Academy Greenhouse. This was not identified, it was not in the CIP report until after the CIP report was generated this year. And this comes to us because we had a panel blow off in one of the last storms last winter. We had that spot patch, we did a lot of work, and looking into what caused it, the bottom line is that all that glass in that roof on the greenhouse here at Pembroke Academy is from 1999. You can see the stress fractures happening throughout there. It's more than likely going to happen again this winter. We're looking to get past that in the summertime and replace all that glass in the greenhouse. Next up, we would look to deposit $10,000 into the technology fund. Then we would look to deposit $200,000 into the school site improvement fund. Once that clears, we would look to withdraw $450,000 for the track here at Pembroke Academy. This has also been on the list for the past several years. We did get half of it a couple of years back, looking to get the other half this year. We have worked with some contractors to secure, and secure is the wrong word, but to make sure that price does still carry. That was a high price when we first started looking at the track at this point in time. We're coming very close to that $450,000. So the reality of that fund is, should we go over that? We do have a pretty good buffer in there to not cause me to ask for more.
Did I go too fast, Patty?
No, we just have a little glitch in that the warrant articles weren't uploaded to the drive, so, but I have your email, is that what you're reading from?
I agree.
Okay, I have your email, and then I have the draft that was typed up, so we can circle back.
So these are also identified on the capital improvement list minus that greenhouse, which you have seen at some point in time as well?
Yep, great.
Then we would look to deposit $25,000 into the equipment fund, and then turn around and withdraw that for camera upkeep and maintenance with our camera systems. We do have some major stuff out there that we know we need to tend to. And those would be the warrant articles on my end.
Thanks. I don't have the full warrant, I'm just looking at your email here. Are all of these, I forgot one, I'm sorry, that's not on the email, but that would be to deposit $10,000 into our vehicle trust fund. I did miss that. And I will triple check these tomorrow morning now that I see that missing. Are all of these recommended from surplus? Or is there anything that we're saying that we need to fund regardless?
So historically, they've been from surplus, and I would continue to go that route with the exception that that greenhouse needs to be taken care of.
How much is that along?
That's $100, that's in.
So we might want to separate a new one from surplus, and then $100,000 for every greenhouse from taxation to make sure you get it, is that basically what you're saying?
That's what I was getting at.
So the other side of the building fund is, take for instance, that PA roof, the gymnasium roof, that's 1999. We have multiple roofs at this point in time that are 1999, that we've tried to go every other year on. There was no plan up until five, six, seven, eight years ago. We've tried to go every other year to get ahead of those roofs. PA's been pieced together, each section, we call it by the year, and the oldest roofs, we have multiple that are 1999.
Okay. Anyway, it's tough with all the documents in front of us, but do we have questions for Josh? I'm cheating.
Yeah, it's kind of funny, the emails looking forward to everyone like. I think it's one I can ask.
It's called warrants. And I usually put Ashley's name and then warrants, just saying.
Perfect.
It depends on the device or your phone.
So I guess just to fill time, to talk about the track, which we've talked about for a significant amount of time at this point in time. The track has a, maybe a 20-year life say on it. Again, that's a 1999. You only get so many chances to quote-unquote shim and overlay it, so that's to take off the top layer and put a nice fresh top layer to replace it. Or past that point, the, no company will come and shim and overlay that track. The cracks started happening.
Okay.
Okay, so we had a little technical glitch. If you weren't able to get into the meeting until now, and we're going to post both videos, so there's a recap, there's a, Mr. Kossen went through the warrant articles, under proposed for facilities stuff. So if you check out the other video, it's probably only a few minutes long, you can see those, but that's what we're talking about at the moment. So other questions around these?
I mean, he seems to be afraid of this somehow, but we can undo it.
So just to be clear, Josh, if we, if surplus is such that we get $200,000, this is next, we can write July. Do you think we will be able to afford to do the track at that point? Or, you said that price has kind of been creeping up in the intermediate years, but if we can put that full 200 in, then we'll have the 450 and think that will cover the project?
Right, so that price, working with the contractor, that price has held true for probably four or five years at this point, probably five. And it's always been quote-unquote 4 to 450 will cover. That's kind of how we get our pricing, and then once that time comes, then we go get a true price and prices out from all the contractors. So having the work and relationship with this company at this point in time, the 450 is, we're on the backend of that. So 450 should cover it. Should we go over it, we have a little bit of extra with it, or a little bit of a balance in that fund that should cover us no problem.
So this is probably a conversation for a different time, but with that on sort of the horizon, trying to think if there's any reason, whether the traffic, you know, building roads, yada yada, is there any, has there been any thought about putting the track anywhere else? Or is that, would that add, I was assuming that would add an additional lots of money to the fund?
Significantly, yeah, significantly. So the other side of that, if say that track passes this year, we don't have the funds like we do in some of the other accounts, where I would get this project rolling in July like I would with, say, a gymnasium roof here at Pembroke Academy. We would have to wait for those funds to be deposited, which is usually in December, which, quote, this year realistically puts this track for the following summer. So it wouldn't be the summer of 2025.
26.
It'd be 26.
So we don't need to put a warrant on approving withdrawal of funds? Because we wouldn't be withdrawing the fund, we would go to next March to withdraw.
True.
So we're just putting in?
Okay, so we wouldn't have to do the 450?
We're putting in 250, no, 200 more.
But with that being said, if we did ask for the withdrawal for next year, that would allow me to start that project before we get to the summer.
Okay.
Right? It would allow me a lot of the work to convince them, like, let me get my PO now as opposed to in July.
Okay, so we'll put 200 in and take out 450? I'll show these to you again before we go filing.
With the, with the, being realistic, there could be a contingency factor there as well, which we would discuss if that comes up, I guess.
And so I guess I agree with Kerry, outside of the track, which we've known about for years, and the new item of the greenhouse, the rest of it is pretty typical. So I know we're very early, but, you know, again, give consideration to ordering this. You know, obviously, I think the way you've got on your sheet there with the roofs being number one, you know, plus the greenhouse, that's good, but, you know, the track's that critical, is that coming in at number two, you know, in that order?
So I, historically, I've put this on paper, and then historically, the board ranks them where they want to be. And I'm definitely here for any discussion and answer, any Q and A of where that should be. The reality of it is this year, and I don't usually sit here and say this, but this year, that greenhouse needs to happen. And I believe that track needs to happen. So again, the cracks have started to happen within the track that we've been able to maintain over the last five, 10 years. They have started, they are there. But more so in what I've talked about the last three or four years is the indentations, the, not a sinkhole, but think of a sinkhole. So you have a flat track surface, and all of a sudden you come up and there's just a little dip in there that are, they're starting to grow, they're starting to get bigger, and those are my concerns. Wadding the track is one thing, but that track is used not just by this school community, the whole community uses it, and those indentations are very scary out there. So those are two things that are very critical in my world.
Josh, I have a question. So I was just thinking about, we talked about the greenhouse, separating that out with the $100,000. Just for the board to think about, if that's voted down, you can't do it. So no means no on a warrant article. So what would happen if we couldn't fix the greenhouse?
So right now, as of August, we had $441,000 roughly in that account. We would ask to deposit $155,000, which has been our historic goal figure. We would ask to take $20,000 out for the flooring replacement District Y, $140,000 out for the PA roof on the gymnasium, and now $100,000 out for the greenhouse, which would put us somewhere around $336,000?
So even if we didn't get approved to put that in, we would still be able to have enough to take it back?
There's still plenty in that.
Correct, perfect. I just want to make sure we don't lose it.
Question about that, though. Can, could we have a contingent warrant at all? So if that failed, could we ask to do it from surplus?
Probably, I'd rather have Dean look at it, but I would.
Because, I mean, I think people are usually quite accommodating of what we want to do with surplus. And I think even if they voted it down, when it's going to be $100,000 or $155,000 straight from taxes, they might be willing to do it the other way. So if we can do that, I think it would be worth.
So just a comment, just a comment on that fund. I know there's discussion about totals and where funds should be. This is a prime example of, you look at that fund today and there's $441,000. And this was a surprise to us. Yes, we need to be better to have something like that identified, but $400,000 isn't a lot when you have all this District Y. And I just wanted to say that. Between roofs, between A-Back, between windows and doors, all that stuff is old at this point in time. And it's one setback like this that if we're not continuing our plan forward, we're in trouble.
Yeah, a lot of big ticket items live in that fund. So it sounds like, as far, I mean, I think, if you guys are okay with it, I think we've discussed what we've dedicated the night to, I think we can have a discussion about order right now. And it sounds like what's listed as number one in the email should be number one. And that's not, that's to be raised from taxes. I think that it's a good idea, but you all can correct me if I'm wrong, to make a contingent number two that says if number one fails, then propose the same thing, but only to be deposited from surplus. Does that make sense to everybody else?
Have we raised the $155,000 from taxes before, or has it always come from surplus?
I think it's always been surplus.
Surplus.
Yeah, this year is surplus too, right? Yeah, so we don't worry about it.
Historically, it's been from surplus. Okay. I thought, I thought what you had said before was that one was important enough that we might want to do it from taxes so that if we didn't have surplus?
Oh, okay, sorry.
So we can have that discussion too, we could just say, no, we don't want to do that.
Yeah, and is your question that if we, if you, for the first time, it sounds like, ask to raise it from taxes and then it fails, then you can't go back into surplus and do it, is that the concern?
So we'd have to have another warrant to say, hey, can we deposit this money from surplus?
I think that would be extremely confusing.
I think it would encourage them to just say, just take it from.
That's true.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Probably a lot less.
Which, if that's what we want to do, fine. They have a, they'd both be essentially the same warrant, but just different sourcing. So like, there could be confusion, people be looking at it in redundancy, you know, the topics on it might not be that good.
So the $155,000, the first one would be to say deposited. Number two would then say, now we're going to come behind and withdraw that with a couple items in there.
And then you're saying that we have enough in there to cover the greenhouse even if?
Yes, we do.
So then if it's number one?
Safe.
If it, you know, if we do it from surplus and it's the first one on the list, it's the first one to be funded?
Yeah.
Then, yeah, we probably just do it from surplus then, I guess.
And then you want those drawn out next? We talked about this last year.
Yeah.
Keeping them.
Yeah, keeping, yeah.
Putting in, taking right out.
Yeah, I think, I think that, I mean, from a public perspective, I think that makes sense. Like, hey, we just talked about putting this money in this fund for this express purpose, and now we need to withdraw instead of talking, you know, doing all the deposits and then withdrawals later. Okay, so, sorry, you messed up. So $155,000 from surplus as a deposit would be number one. Number two would be withdrawal, would be number two, that's already on the email, is number two.
Yep, yep.
So then, do we want to rearrange? I think usually we have the technology fund as one of the last ones. So we move number four up to number three, the deposit, the $200,000 deposit towards site improvement for the track?
My opinion is yes, before summer break's late.
Well, also, you know, to your point about depression from the track, like you let it go out of the year, out of the year of snow, out of the year of ice, kind of your water, then you're not just resurfacing, you're actually rebuilding, something like.
Well, that's what we're. So we are, we are at the rebuilding, so we're past the resurface point.
It just gets more expensive though.
It does get more expensive, and at this point in time, this is an annual discussion. It's gone on.
So to the point, though, I mean, should we, should we have, like, signs out there at this point?
So, had a lot of discussion with, like, Mr. Vazina, the athletic director. We think we're in good shape, we will reevaluate it after the winter season. The cracks we filled, but those are spreading, and we can continue to fill those as needed. It's not the long-term goal. The impressions, if they're bad enough, we will close the lane down, is what we would do, and we would start at that approach, and close down, and close down. Quite honestly, before my time in my position, but when I was here, they've been at that spot before.
Okay.
And the resurface allowed the fix that time, the resurface, it's past that point now.
I just didn't know, I don't, I don't know if anybody else has ever heard this, but I've heard, like, it's probably not true, but that, like, if you put a beware of dogs sign up, then actually it makes you more liable because you know you have a dangerous animal. So I'm like, should we have a sign up that says, hey, there's dips in the track, you might hurt yourself? Or does that actually open us up and say, hey, you knew the track was bad, just fill as you wanted?
I kind of feel like we'd be in the closing down before we did that.
That makes sense. Yeah, there you go.
True.
Sorry to take it care of. We just took the question off the table of that. Okay, so three is number four.
Yep.
To decide on equipment, technology, and special ed?
Vehicle.
And vehicle, thank you.
Yeah.
Special ed on here?
No, no, there's nothing for special ed yet, and there's nothing for Hill School Edition or anything. The architects on that, there's nothing on that.
Or school materials.
Yep, instructional materials. Yeah, everything from your trust fund list is up here.
So this, this is the point I'm going to, and I was at the last budget committee meeting, I was trying to look something else up, and something was said concerning the select board turning their capital reserves into, them into agents to expend. And, you know, I know we've had this discussion a little bit before as to who, what, when, why, we can use these capital reserves. And this seems almost like a perfect example when we're talking about, you know, the special ed and the educational materials rather than having them on a separate warrant article. And even, the roof falls in in the greenhouse, we've got the building fund. Yep, you come to us, and we have a public hearing, and then that's it. So I think that's something, do we put a warrant article on this year for the same?
For the board to be agents to expend?
Yes.
On the whole.
I'm going to clarify this on Thursday, but I'm pretty sure that's what I heard, and I made a note about it to go back and ask if I ever did it, so.
So Patty would know better on that. You are agents to expend on many of them, you aren't on all of them. In the building capital reserve fund specifically, you're not, right?
They are not.
And that is one of our biggest.
Yeah. The only other thing that is marked on here, if it's correct, is that the site improvement trust, you are also not agents to expend. On the trust, if that's correct, on the trust fund sheet, everything else you are.
Is that right?
I don't remember the site one, honestly, but that's, that's what the trust fund sheet says. You can check on it.
So in the equipment fund, we're having a warrant article for that, so that's another one. So we're not agents to.
No, you are. You are on everything. So it says you are not on school building capital reserve and site improvement. That's what the sheet says.
I mean, I can see it, you know, warrant to deposit 25 for the equipment fund, but by then we have a.
We don't need it.
We don't need it. So number six is not needed.
Correct.
General, is number two vehicle, $10,000?
$10,000. We did start that fund off a couple of years back, going with $7,000. I don't believe we funded it last, last year. We have asked to increase that to $10,000 for the times.
Okay. So what I have gotten it down, just so I want to get on the same page, for the ones in the email, so not special ed or the other ones you mentioned, is number one would be number one. So that's the deposit of $155,000 for school building, the school building fund. Number two would be number two, which is a withdrawal from the same. Number three is number four, which is the deposit for school site improvement towards the track. Number, no?
The next one was technology.
Yeah, we switched. Right, I think we're, I think we're putting that at the bottom. The third warrant article will be, was number four in the email, right? And then the fourth article.
Don't have the list.
Sorry?
Because I don't have the list.
I said it. Yeah, so number one is going to be the deposit for the school building trust fund.
$155,000?
Yeah, I have that.
Number two would be the withdrawal from the school building trust fund of $260 for an array of things. The third warrant article would be the deposit of $200,000 to the school site improvement fund, which is mainly towards the track. The fourth warrant article would be, what's number five in this email, which is a $25,000 deposit into the equipment fund. The fifth warrant article would be a deposit of 10K into the vehicle fund. And the sixth one would be a deposit of 10K into the technology fund. And I don't think we've really decided on the last, the vehicle, the technology, either way, but I'm also not sure, Matt, if this. Well, so, what was the number four? Number four is the equipment, $25,000 is for the equipment. So then what's still on the list, Patty, special ed? And we don't have any information on that one yet, right? And end materials?
Instructional materials.
Okay, and we did talk about maybe taking something out of there, because you can use it, right? What's the balance of that one?
$51,000.
Oh, good. What's the technology?
And this, these balances are made 2024. So, yeah, we did, oh, we did get some in London this year. Got part of them, right? We didn't fund all of them, we did, so this balance is.
So mine, I believe, are from August, if you want to see it.
So it's like. It looks like technology has 48.
Oh, yeah, because that was in May, and it wouldn't have the deposits, sorry.
Yeah, because we had to make quick. Get everything, but we did.
And then the building capital reserve is 436. For school, we've got that, 167. You can see papers here. School equipment is 109. Special ed is 497. Instructional materials is at 76. Is that me? No, please, sorry. Oh, yeah, 76.
And you did just approve, just under 14 on that equipment, so that's a little bit less.
Oh, sorry, I did miss that one. So site improvements, 142.
Oh, that was.
41.
That's like on a 10-year. Playing right. And what, you have been?
I don't think we funded it last year though.
Right, and you're two years into your.
First one's a 21, I think the second's a 22, or 22 and 23. An example of some stuff, like our, our first tractor that we would ask for. At this point, that's six, seven years old, so.
Right, okay. Okay, any questions or discussions that we need to call for? Obviously none of this is written in stone yet. Just got us trapped. I think you're great, appreciate it, unless you wanna stick around more on the computer. Fun.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Oh, yeah, it's all there on there or something. Yeah, let me, yeah. Thank you, everyone.
I'm sure Andrew got an update and I'll get that updated.
Yeah, well, you can start.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yep, let me try, so we're gonna move on to, I think this is 5B now, which was. Be on my records.
It went off some handles too.
18 years.
Yeah, it went off somewhere here one day.
Oh, sorry.
B was the warrant articles. Yeah, yeah, we.
Yeah, we swiped some.
Yeah.
Sure.
Swiped them.
We did, yeah. I put the, this is not the final sheet, but the cut sheet dated March 19th is what I handed Amber. The only thing, we, I had put a subtotal for personnel that I wasn't sure it was exact. So your budget, if you look at your budget and say this doesn't match, we had to tweak a few things at the end to make it exactly 3 million.
Right.
But it's pretty damn close. Because I had a separate personnel sheet and, you know, I added things up and we ended up a little, a little off, but not by much. So that was the final cut sheet that we, that we used. And then the principals did a really nice job, if you, if you have time to look at it, but they did a school impact cut from the cuts. They stated the positions that were cut, the staff who left, the losses of classes, the positions that needed to pick up extra duties because of other positions being eliminated. So they put a lot of time into this and gave a lot of good information, I thought.
Yeah, that's very good. Those two documents combined, I think, tell our story.
Yeah. And then we haven't made obviously any changes to your budget that you were handed out last week, so.
Is this something that we could put, are we gonna hold, are we gonna hold on to it for the impact sheet?
As long as we're confident in everything in there, in fact, we're.
Yeah, I do too.
Yeah, I think they were being gentle in a few areas, but for the most part, I'm fairly confident.
I create, I did create a copy of it because we had names. Because it was intended, it was originally gonna be internal for us.
Sure.
And then when I saw it, I said, well, this would actually be a great handout. So I just took out names and my positions.
Yeah, yeah, if you guys can make sure that MBC gets a printed copy of that, that'd be great. And then, I guess this is good, as I say this, because I think it kind of clear your heads out a little bit. I am not finding the time to work with anybody to get this Facebook thing the way it should be. And we should have it. If anybody has the time, desire, energy, wants to take that on, I will turn it over to you. And you're getting up with it. Patty said somebody from Deerfield might be willing to help, it's really good at doing stuff. I just am not finding, I think about it twice a week and I don't find the time to make it happen. But I think it's important, so if somebody thinks they do have the time, it's all yours.
I'll take it, I'll take it from, take it off your plate, I guess.
Okay.
And I'll reach out to Kendra because I've had some conversations with her about some things to write, so.
Okay, great.
However, she set it up to like no comments.
Yeah, because I, I set it up, but it's just a page. And, and like four people wrote to me, texted me, and within like 10 minutes, it's like, don't make it a page, make it a business. Because then you can have multiple people that can post and it's all anonymous and they can go comment. I'm like, okay, yeah, that's all the stuff I want, but I don't do Facebook very much, so. So, yeah, somebody, if somebody can run with that, it's, it will get done faster that way, I probably. But reach out to me on the side, because I've got passwords and stuff. There's a separate email account that's set up for it, just gonna get needed an email, I can set it up.
Yes.
I think I have all that stuff written down, if not, I can reset it and then write it down and give it to you.
Okay.
Patty's too, too, and I don't know what the policy is, but, you know, is there a, some advertising? To the PA, that, to show or something like that? To help keep some of these sense outdated information that's not completely sensitive, but, but at least get it as back to Facebook. There's an avenue there that probably is safe and kind of.
That's not, I mean, they only volunteer hours, and it's not a bad idea to ask.
It's a little unnerving to give the student access to a Facebook or a Facebook page.
But almost, you can turn out, I mean, like.
Yeah, like, yes, yeah, right.
Yeah. Have interned positions. I mean, you know, my son was an intern with the sheriff's department. And I, you know, it's like.
Choose the right kids, yeah.
You know, but it, just for a kid, but like, we allow them to do certain things, and I think this would be one of those things that you have to like, have the right person, obviously, so that.
And obviously, but like, we would wanna see like, before something goes out, most could be with.
Right.
So they would be like, kind of like, structural things, you'd be like, yeah, go.
Yeah. And it's not, I mean, I think a lot of this discussion may have been done before you were here, Ken, but it's generally gonna be just. It's just gonna be.
Yeah.
Documents linked to the, and like, there won't be a lot of flavor to it anyway, so.
I'm thinking though, don't lie, it would maybe help us add some flavor.
Yeah.
So that when the time comes, people aren't just thinking about us as, but people, you know. So.
Yeah, I mean.
I have a last person to know anything about branding, but it would help us have a better brand, I think, in the center of it.
Yeah, oh, do you wanna, do you wanna take that and email Dr. Morris and see if, like, there's probably a staff member teaching a semi-oralic class.
Yeah.
And he may even hook you up with somebody that could give recommendations and see how anybody's interested. I also just like the idea of having more students engaged with us.
I mean, it's a great idea, so thanks to.
Yeah. I always say my favorite thing on the board, the whole time I've been here, is when Sandy's class taught us about pennies.
That's a rubbery kid, it's not, yeah.
Oh, yeah, that was.
Yeah. Yeah, that's true. Maybe enjoyed that a little too much, I don't think.
Can we add, until that gets going, the budget cut paper that we all really like to the minutes? So at least the public could access it.
Yeah, put the board packet, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, because I think that stuff should be public, as public as possible. Reach as wide an audience as possible, so people can see the real impact. Speaking of that, this is only partially budget related, but is there by any chance any activity on hiring people? A fresh teacher or anybody else? And so.
Was there a speech that?
So no changes to the budget, does anybody have, has anybody looked and have any specific questions on the budget that we got last week?
I, I, to be honest with you, I don't have questions, I've been over a couple of times now, and, you know, looking to reduce the spending in any way, shape or form is gonna be detrimental based on where we are right now and after having seen the impact. Obviously, we're, you know, looking for, to take some out of our capital reserve funds, but, I mean, it looks, I mean, we're only adding two people back to Paris and to kindergarten, right? So personnel-wise, it's flat, aside from the CBAs. You know, we, we've gotta pick up the computer replacement. And that might be something that the replacement schedule may have to be adjusted based on the numbers. You know, and, and I think talking to the administrators and possibly Josh, you know, what, you know, what can we work out to lessen the expense and still provide those, those tools? And, and just the one thing that kind of escapes me a little bit, I spoke last week about, you know, you know, basing it on needs, having a scholarship fund, if, if the students who can provide their own devices. And Dr. Morris, you know, basically said, well, they have no devices, they're gonna be on the school system. But, I mean, if the Chromebooks that we give to them now go home with them, are there, you know, protocols in place on those to keep them out of websites? Or, you know, if they're on their own network and they're doing their homework and they wanna watch a video at the same time? Can they do that? I, I don't know how that actually works.
Yeah, the issue, Andy, you can obviously help me, because I'm, I'm just a layperson, but just being hammered into my head. Any devices that we give out are on our school-owned network and they have access to things on their network. So when it's not a school-owned and controlled device, they have to log into personal devices. We don't have as much bandwidth for that and they don't stay logged in, so they have to continuously keep logging into the, to the network. So that's kind of been my understanding. At one point, we did away with personal devices and there was a outcry for that. Obviously, we have to have people be able to log into their systems, but my understanding is all the filters are on a school-owned device, they can't get to anything, and that's why we've always provided the devices.
Right, there's, there's a couple of layers of it, and this is mostly just from, you know, watching what happens with my own children. And it changes, right, throughout what they have access to changes from when they move from PRS up to here.
Yeah.
But, yeah, so I guess, a little personal, as far as this topic goes, is I, personally, I feel like Chromebooks are sort of the way of the world in education right now.
Right.
But they are not great devices. There was a time where, it wasn't, didn't last very long, there was a time where a lot of high school kids were getting Windows laptops. The difference, to not get too crazy on it, is on a Windows laptop, it's running the whole Windows operations, it's doing all the heavy lifting on the device. So it has hardware capable of doing that. A Chromebook is basically a dumb box that connects to the internet. Everything that you do on, there's very little internal storage and most of the processing that's happening is happening. When you type in a Google Doc rather than a Microsoft Word, all the processing power that goes into creating that document is happening on Google Server rather than on the device. Which means the device itself, there exist really good powerful Chromebooks. That's not what we buy, and it's not what any high school buys. I say all that, the point is expecting these devices to last more than four or five years, in my opinion, just isn't reasonable. In fact, I mean, my daughter's a sophomore, sort of, and she, her Chromebook was new when she got it as a freshman. And it all, I can't stand to touch it, do her homework, because it's already so slow. Chromebooks are also weird in that they, I'm not sure what our contract is or anything, or, you know, what device we're buying, but when you bought a Windows computer, you could keep using it almost forever. You could usually upgrade to the next operating system, it might cost 100 bucks, but you could do it. And you'd use that thing until it just turned into a pile of ashes. Chromebooks are built sort of on a, almost disposable cycle, and after a certain number of, of software updates, they're not eligible to get software updates anymore. So then they're not even secure. So there's a whole host of reasons why we, we can't make them last six or seven years. It's just sort of the nature of the beast. But to answer your other questions, it goes two directions. What Patty said about bringing devices here that aren't set up and controlled by the school presents bandwidth problems, but it also prevents, means we can't stop them from playing video games or doing whatever else that they shouldn't be doing while they're in school. And in the other direction, the, the control that the Google Suite offers means even when they go home with those devices, they still are under the control, the school can still see everything that they're doing, the stuff is still blocked. So we still have all the control that we have in the building when they're offline. So, I mean, they are great, it's, it's great that there's the opportunity to get devices that are not, you know, $1,000 each and be able to provide for the kids, and I personally think that's the right thing to do, because every other kid in the country is getting those. And if we're gonna be one of the very few schools that says our kids aren't gonna have access to technology for their whole school day, I think kids will fall behind. Anyway, soapbox over, sorry.
Again, that wasn't like, I was looking for an alternative.
Yeah.
You know, I know they need this, and it's not like, I was just kind of like, looking for that alternative. Yeah, I think I understand, I understand now, even when it's off-site, it's still kind of locked down.
And you can, I mean, the Google, Google, the other interesting part is you, so my kids have Chromebooks at home too. They can sign into that Chromebook with their school Google account, and then they have the same, many of the same restrictions. So, so that's kind of sort of an option, but I think you get into a weird world where it's like, well, who can afford it and who can? Where's that line? And it's, it's sort of, I feel like it's similar to what I've always said about the field trips, like, if we're gonna, you know, these field trips to DC and environmental camp, in my opinion, are part of the curriculum and extremely important learning opportunities. And that being the case, I feel they should be the budget and part of what we pay for. If we're gonna say that every kid needs a Chromebook to do their work, and I mean, we're posting our assignments on the classroom, then every kid has to have one of those devices. And if we, if we say you have to have one of these devices, then in my opinion, it should be in the budget and cover. I'm sure there are people that disagree with that. Over retirement? Oh, changes in the budget, yeah, budget observations, yeah.
And I wanted also to address, you know, statement concerning the Cadillac budget, the restoration budget. It scares me for one simple reason. That again, goes back to nothing more than perception. This is, if, if we were to get to, you know, after you looked at the impact sheet and then you looked at the budget, this, and, and we say this would make everything better again. What? It, it, it just almost, the words, it doesn't sit right with me, because we've kind of made it through this year. At that point in March, hopefully, we've made it that far, but the people are gonna look at it and say, look, you're doing it right now. So why would you roll this budget out to restore everything? Well, we, you know, our explanation would be, well, we had a, you know, school of excellence here two years ago. And now we don't, and this is what changed, to, to change that again. But they're gonna look at it, the residents are gonna look at it and say, well, it's working now. All right, we don't need the plaque on the wall. And then presenting a budget like that to the budget committee, they're gonna look at it and say, okay, what are you doing? You know, because right now we're up to $1 million, and essentially we'll be up 5 million dollars from where we are right now. And would, would I like to have that back? Yeah, but I think what's gonna happen is you're gonna have, you know, that equal. But I think what's going to happen is you're going to have, you know, that equal and opposite reaction to that, to, to people seeing that, "Look what they're trying to do." And it'll make it even harder if we only move forward with the budget we have right now. And it'll, it'll get people's backs up against it. And, yeah, who knows? Again, it's the population that shows up in March too. You may get that population that walks in the door and says, "Okay, we don't like the way the schools are working right now. Our kids are in there. I don't care what it costs, but we want that back. So we're adding 3 million to your number." So I think this budget combined with the impact and the list of budget cuts would suffice to motivate the people to accept the budget we have right now. Because there's a lot of people, you know, Melanie included, myself included, whoever else here, that, you know, you got a tax bill, you know, and it was, you know, because the evaluations, but yeah, sure. We went down to 1968 on the, on the, on the tax rate. But that growth in our asset, the value of our asset, you know, wiped out any, any savings from that $3 million cut that we might have, you know, we might have enjoyed. Even though the same amount of money is going forward, it got shifted from one population to another. So, you know, I'm just, I'm, I'm concerned about going down that road and really having a, a strong backlash and having a thousand people legitimate, you know, with, that are all against it. And somebody else stands up and says, "Okay, well, you want to play games? We'll play games too. Here's another $3 million cut." So just looking at it from that perspective, that's what can go wrong. It may be all right, but I think, you know, just trying to be half-acting with this one. You know, you know, just, so our eyes are open moving forward, whatever we decide to do anyway. But, you know, is it a good idea? Yeah, I think it is. But there could be repercussions that, you know, we may not think about or plan for.
It's so kind of like to hear where everybody's at on that. They sent an email and said, "I wanted to have this conversation." So if, anyway, let's jump in, go ahead or we can just go around the table.
I'll jump in real quick. I think my only question is just making sure, I know you guys all work hard, that this is the budget. Like we, I want to make sure it's not a bare bones budget because it is up $2 million. And with the cut sheet, I think our biggest hurdle is going to be using those two documents and communicating with our town as to how important it is, because it does happen again. We may not be able to provide any sort of close to adequate education for these kids. There's no other place to cut. So I think we really need to work on communication. So my only, you know, I know they want the parents back, but is there anything else where this is, this is it? I guess that's what we want to mention.
I think when we first went over the budget, I shared with you that fear of what that number's going to look like at the end because we don't have it when we're doing the building budgets. So, so I don't think it's bare bones, but it's, I think it's what we need. They, the administration felt like this is what's important and we need to restore some of the things that were cut. We need to pay for some of the things we paid for in ESAR. I think they, we went into this thinking, "Well, we're never going to get all those positions back. That's just never going to happen. So what are our priorities?" And the positions that we did all agree were the kindergarten parent professions. That's, that's a huge issue and that's been probably one of the hardest. I think, I forget if it was Jess who mentioned it, that we don't know what the staffing is going to look like because people are feeling it right now. We saw the list, we saw all the other things people have had to do. So we may have more people leave and we may be having a different conversation. But for right now, with what we have and what we know, this is what we feel like. We can stand up and say, "Yes, these are the things we need."
I think so, a quick follow-up on that. I wouldn't really ask that, actually, that's one last thing to hear. Well, the message I got from them was that they're attempting to subopt. Yeah, that's my.
Yes.
And so would you say that they presented us numbers that they feel meets their needs or numbers that they feel we can get a yes on?
Yeah, I mean, probably in the middle. More in the middle, I can't, I can't say we're one side or the other. I think it's not the Cadillac version by any stretch, but it's also a functional budget.
Like minimum viable product budget?
It's probably there.
That's, I mean, I feel great about that, but, you know.
Yeah.
I, the reason I put that out there for everyone to think about is because, A, of what they said. But also, you know, I really do believe strongly that this, we have the obligation to put forward a budget with the students' needs and stuff. Like that's, that's that. And if we are playing, I'm not using the word game here to be trivial. If we're playing the game of saying, "Well, what do we think is going to happen?" I totally understand that, I get that. I just don't know how you calibrate for that correctly. And are we inadvertently putting forward a budget that says, "We're going to make the kids pay for it again?" When we don't really know, to your point about the evaluations going up and wiping out savings. I mean, I don't know what the tax bill's going to look like next year, even if we are bare bones or if we're somewhere in the middle, you know, between that and getting full restoration. So I, I don't really know how we're supposed to move forward meeting the perceived need of a population when we don't know what, what the, the budgets are going to look like, what they're, what, how the tax rate is going to be in, in other kinds of ways. So, so I do want, I mean, if, if we can step back and say, "We're just going to look at this, not thinking about the tax rate for them." We can just do that and say, "We're going to put together a budget that's responsible." I think that's our obligation, for sure. By which I mean, we're going to meet the needs of our schools and our students. And we're not going to build lazy rivers and we're not going to do crazy things. We're not going to put a donald in the track so that we don't get any more pooling water on the track. We're not going to do that kind of stuff. But we are allowed to do things that we, we can defend and say, "This is necessary, right? This is not a nice-to-have, this is a need-to-have kind of budget." I don't know that it has to go all the way to, I used the word Cadillac last week.
Yeah, that's why.
But.
The restoration.
But I do think that maybe you're not going to claw back all of it. But are there areas beyond just two parent professions? Where we say, "We really, really, really need to at least get caught trying here," you know, and send a message to the students and the teachers that we're going to fight for this, at least in those areas, right? That's all, that was all my, my thought.
And to piggyback on that a little bit, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking along the same lines, but even not necessarily just on the personnel end. But I've heard students, not even just my own, but I've heard students say, "I, they're not allowed to print anything at school. So I printed my math homework so I can fill it out, but I know three kids in my class that don't have a printer." To me, that's not meeting the needs of the kids. If, if we can't print out the math homework that needs to be printed out, we're not doing the service that we need to do for the kids. So that's where I'm like, I, this is not the number that any of us really wanted to see. But to your point, are we doing our job if we put forth a budget that we know still means next year, hopefully we get two pairs back, but, you know, we still have to figure out how we're going to come up with the money for paper and pencils.
You still need a French teacher.
Right.
Right, but yeah, you know, like those, those are the kinds of things too, yeah. Gary?
Well, okay. So I tend to agree with everybody on this. I, I see it from both sides. And I don't want to go through what we went through last year. But I also am afraid if we don't bring back some, on top of what we've already asked for, two pairs. If we don't start bringing some of this back, we're going to lose even more teachers. I mean, these teachers are, they're, it's only November and some of them are at their bandwidth. And I, I fear for them mentally and physically, just what's this doing to them? And I by no means want to get another $3 million cut, but part of me looks at it as we go forward with a $5 million increase and they cut us 3 million, well, hey, at least we got our 2 million. You know, and that's not. Hey, listen, I know it's being recorded and people may have heard this. Yeah, exactly. But I, I, I think personnel is important. I think replacing some of these things that we, some of these teachers that we lost, it's important. I mean, we've got a, we've got a gift. They're doing the best they can and I know that and I trust in that, that every day they go in there and they, you know, they may be exhausted, but they're giving our kids everything they have. But we got to.
Well, and then the other part, if I could just.
No, go right ahead.
I do remember, you know, Dan talking about the challenge of scheduling that came as a result of losing positions, students not being able to get what they need anymore. Like that, that's not just, we had to put a few more kids in a classroom. That's literally not being able to offer them what they need to finish properly. And so they end up having to take through the lax, which I guess, good that it's there. But again, that's to the point of suboptimal. And that becomes a self-fulfilling prophecy at a certain point, right? Then you start relying on it even more and then you start saying, "Well, we're going to do even less and less and less and off-board responsibility to other."
And the handful of kids that do come from places like Hooksett don't want to come here again and now we're losing revenue.
And that, I think that's probably, when he said that, it was probably the most frustrating, yeah. There's a class there, but the kid can't take it because they can't wait to make the schedule work for them, they don't know. And it's not like some super extraordinary schedule, it's just a normal schedule. And that was probably the thing that, you know, that probably hit hardest. So, I'm, I'm sorry, Gary.
No, I just want, I just want to say, I mean, I, I'm the first to admit that until you're on this side of the table, you don't understand all of the ins and outs and the, for lack of a better way to put it, all the stuff that goes into this. I mean, and for us to ask to replace some of these positions, you know, maybe years ago I would have been, "You're doing fine, you're doing fine." But when I hear and I see what's going on in these buildings, we've, we've got to do something. Bring them back.
I, I wonder how to reach the people like you and like Jean because just in recent memory, both of you have said that when you got on the board, like you have no idea. So how do we help those people have an idea? It's really, you are in the thick of it. And if you're not in the thick of it, you don't see it, you just see the increase. So I don't, and we talk about communication, but I don't know how to.
Well, I mean, I, I think we, I, I, I say it, but I don't, you know, we spoon-feed this. We do, we provide it, we give it, we sit, we sit here at an empty meeting. People, you know, they want to know, but then they don't come and they don't ask the questions. And so it's, for me, it's a very frustrating situation because it's an uneducated vote against the school because it's just, and I get it, I mean, I see the dollar signs too. But you have to look at it from the other side and what are we providing our kids and what are we not providing our, our students? That, you know, we, we've made a promise to provide them the best education we possibly can. And, I mean, yes, are we meeting requirements? Yes, of course we are, but are they getting what they absolutely need? No, I don't think so.
I, I, yeah, I completely agree. One thing that crossed my mind, I'm not sure if we can have a robust conversation about it tonight because I don't have many details, but I might have put it above your head easier at least, to, to maybe ask admin to be prepared to, and specifically Dan, to be prepared to speak to this. We had a comment from Clint Hanson for a few years now, that one option that may help is to reduce the number of credits they have to graduate and that we are going beyond what's needed. And I don't know the truth behind that. I sent an email to Clint today and just asked him if he could like bullet point summarize his point of view there. But I think we're at a point where we kind of need to have any discussions that we can. And I don't know if that's by route, I don't know if, if Dan would say that takes away the academic rigor that we're trying to provide. But I think we need to have the conversation. So if we can put in.
Didn't we do that a few years ago?
Did we lower it or did we have a conversation?
No, we talked, we, did we just talk about it?
We talked about it.
Okay, because I, for some reason I followed it at, I don't remember if it was, I think Chris was still here, but thinking about reducing the credit numbers.
Yeah.
Was it like, did the state producer want the requirement?
Maybe that's what.
Recently, or within the past few years, you know? And, yeah, yeah, like maybe by, by five, five credits or something like that. And, you know, I'm just picking random, random numbers here. So, you know, let's say, well, where are we at right now with credits needed? 125, right? Okay, so I was picking random numbers.
I think it depends on what type of.
Well, yeah, that's, that's what I said when we talked about the diploma is we have tiered diplomas now and you're going to lose the opportunity and kids lose the advantage. And, you know, I, I want Dan to speak about it, absolutely, that's a great idea. He, he should probably be here for any discussion.
Right. And I know in, in New York, as just one example, that they've had those tiered diplomas. And one means a heck of a lot more than the other ones.
I only have one other thing and I know I always say this, but my other thing is, is special education. Like it's not sustainable. Carrie and I signed the manifest and I gasp every other week when the price keeps going up. I know our team works hard, I live in the thick of it. My IDP week, I'm living the dream, okay? But I, there's always room for improvement and I know we have a really great team trying really, really hard. These costs are astronomical and I, we need to advocate statewide. And I'm very thankful too also for our district who doesn't completely rely on what the state says they're going to pay us. Because I had a panic moment over the weekend.
I want to, that someone wants to bring up here in a second.
Yeah, so I'm thankful that we think ahead, but there's always room for improvement and I don't know where it lies. And is some of the increased costs we're seeing, is that because we got rid of some positions last year with the budget cuts with behavior people or?
No, I mean, we, I actually, when we had the, the meeting working on the building budgets or before I even put the full budget together, Jess came to an admin meeting and we actually went kid by kid by kid. And, you know, I, I was pushing back and I, you know, well, you know, why is this student-owned district? And what's going on with this student? Are we talking about transitioning back? And I can't talk about it.
Oh, yeah.
But if you heard some of the things that these kids are dealing with and, and the shape that they're in, you can't, they cannot be in public school. We have students that are fairly hanging on, that are, our staff are at their wit's end trying to accommodate and keep in school. So I don't know what the answer is, but I know every, every district in the state is dealing with the same thing.
And I think that's the important part is that's, it's not a Pembroke problem. And I, I hate to say it because I don't want to say it's a problem. Special education is extremely important.
No, but funding.
But yeah, it's, and I guess the problem part in my mind comes in. And what everybody that might watch this should understand is that any cut, this is what we've said in the past, of, "Well, if you cut a teacher at PA, it's different than cutting a teacher at TRS because Pembroke pays the whole salary at TRS. They don't pay the whole salary at PA because we share it with the other towns." Similarly, if you cut from our budget, all of that cut's coming from general ed. Or if SPECT costs are not covered the way we thought they might be by the state, which we'll talk about in a second, that's a cut to general ed because those programs are mandated. We, you taxpayers, we taxpayers are going to pay whatever the special ed costs are regardless. There's no win, lose or draw, it's going to be paid. So any budget reduction effectively then comes out of the gen, uh, it comes on the back of the gen ed students every time. So that $3 million that was cut, all came in one way or another from the, the funds for, for gen ed. And it's important to keep that in mind. So can we speak just a little bit to the press release from the commissioner, quickly?
So I'll just give a really quick example of what special education aid is for people who may not know. So special ed used to be called catastrophic aid. That's the reimbursement we get for students. That's the reimbursement we get for students who we spend, you have to spend three and a half times the state average tuition before you can even get through this pool of money. So I'll use random numbers. Say the tuition was $20,000. You have to pay $70,000 for that student before you can apply for reimbursements. And you only get reimbursements above the 70,000. So if you spent $80,000 on a student, you can apply for reimbursement for 10,000. There have been points when we would have received 9,300. There are points when we would have received 10,000. There are points over the years when it used to be you could count on 80% of that. Amber always budgets low. She looks at the trends, we listen to the news, we look at the state budgets, we look at the special ed numbers and she goes low. So this luckily SAU is not really going to be impacted unless kids move down. State is getting no aid because there's, there's a student issue. So we are okay because Amber lowballs the special ed aid, knowing that this could happen. And we don't want to ever get into a tuition or into a revenue shortfall like we did.
So by being okay, as I mentioned, there was a press release recently from the Commissioner of Education in New Hampshire saying that they were going to cut the percentage of that reimbursement funding, I think from roughly 80 something percent down to 67%, which again is just raising taxes on property tax. So that's all it is. But as Patty alluded to, Amber takes that into account that that, that there's a likelihood each year that that could happen. So the budget that we have in front of us is still, still what we're going with. And we think that we've got that discrepancy already in control.
And the, the problem with that aid is it's, it's a reimbursement for the following year. So you don't, you're sitting here, you, I mean, think about this, that you can't even touch that pool of money until you've spent $70,000 on one student. And I mean, that's the biggest, that's the number one problem right there. And then beyond that, you're talking about, you know, we're going to get $6,700 for that $70,000 student.
Can you, can you just fill in some blanks here? I had historically speaking, what are we realistically looking at for reimbursement in any given year, percent of what?
Oh, right.
Dollar or not, but percent of what? That sounds to me like it's in the very low twenties.
If that.
Yeah, it's, it's when our, when our costs are going up this much, there's no more federal funding coming. Our IDA grant is our IDA grant. It used to be a per student reimbursement. It's not anymore because that pool of money is capped. State budget is capped, so there's no more money coming in. There's just way more money going in, which means communities are paying.
So to explain, yeah, explaining it fully to everyone is if that student is going to cost $7,000, sure, or, you know, eight, whatever, if it costs $7,000, we're going to get $10,000 back. We still have the budget at 7,000.
Yes.
Because they're here for revenue. So, I mean, that's kind of clearly stated that now. Oh, well, you don't have the budget for 70. Yeah, you do. It's in the budget right now because we don't get it to the following year.
And Jess has that in that presentation. She does a really good job of explaining that. So that's part of the presentation. And just do that for everybody.
All right, so on the conversation of, you know, the philosophy of the budget, one idea I had that I kind of want to, just throw a little water.
The idea had been tossed around or at least considered of like, oh, we could present two budgets, but it, at the end of the day, that's not real. But I wonder if we could not at school district meeting, but at public hearing in February. I wonder if we could promote that a lot. Like try it, you know, usually to get 40 people, maybe if, well, if you count the people in the room that are like spouses and the people standing up front and stuff, at the public hearing compared to a few hundred in March. I wonder if we could, if, if we tried really hard to get people out to the public hearing this year. We still need to have a budget before that, a given communism budget. But the whole idea of that public hearing is sort of to act as a referendum of like, hey, how's the public feeling about this number? And I wonder if we could use that as an opportunity to say, this is the budget we've given to the municipal budget committee. This is what it represents. But what we'd actually like, what, what would get us to what we think is the best for the kids, the best, right, not the don't, but what is acceptable level of education in our eyes is actually 1.5 million more than what we get, whatever that is. And try to gauge interest, if we could get 150 people in there and try to gauge interest and ask people to go up to the microphone and give their opinions on that. And then, because we could amend our number anytime after that, up or down. So I'm just wondering if it's worth it. And again, I wouldn't, I would not ask Amber to create two or three full budgets. This would be more like, we've got a main budget and then we've got a cup sheet like we've done in the past and we've got an addition sheet, which we've never done in the past. And we sort of present like, hey, here's, here's what we put forth. We described that as kind of what we've talked about tonight. It's like, we're not going to call it bare bones, but it's just enough by budget. What we really think is best will cost this much more money and we'd really like to present that in March. What do you guys think? And just have people tell us. Is that, is that out of this world? I mean, it kind of predicates the fact that people show up and that's, that's our proposition.
That is.
We can put it on Facebook and show.
Yeah. That's kind of similar with like what I was saying and sorry, don't hate me, is I wonder if after the holidays, like in January, one of our workshop things or maybe it's a separate meeting, I know we don't like WebEx, but we did it through COVID. I almost wonder if a town hall where you turn your meeting in and you allow people to ask questions about the budget, if the budget's out there. The budget's out there and they can say, well, I have a question on this line. Like why do we have to face the problems then? What's an esser? Maybe if we answer those questions, the right people will show up to the public hearing in the end of March.
We've done that a few times in Deerfield, but they've had, I think they've called it a public forum. It's almost like our own public hearing.
Correct.
And they did interact and they talked about the, you know, norms of the protocol, what it would look like ahead of time. So one person was answering the questions.
Like you wouldn't have to do it alone, but I just wonder if it will be perceived what I think you would get. I do think you would get a lot of people on there.
I think you could do it both, right? We could do it here on auditorium or somewhere and people could come in person and we could take questions.
Okay, yeah, Deerfield didn't do it online, I think, yeah. But they've done their public hearing.
You're saying instead of saying that they can't physically make it here, like during that, we had 155 people asking questions on there.
Oh, one, we had about 400 online at 11:00 PM meetings.
Yeah. I'm not trying to read back questions, but I just think it would be a good way for the community to ask questions and have the right information in the question.
Yeah, and, and I mean, if nothing else, right? It shows good faith and we are trying to give you every opportunity to understand this. And we know it's art, it's a lot. I mean, this thing, the door's not. So yeah, I think that's, I think it's a good idea. I wonder if we could even do more than one.
Yeah, what, what else to do that, forget if I didn't write this somebody, you know, I just dreamt it. But if any of my coworkers are listening to this, they can laugh because I hate FAQs, but I think it can be helpful. Yeah. We shouldn't be thinking of that, but I mean, but, but something like that. But there's, there's jargon involved. There's, you know, there are multiple lines, it just has zeros on them. What's not on it, right? So that, so, you know, anything that we can do to kind of diffuse something that is an unnecessary false flag irritant to something, right? To get them a little bit, said, no, we thought about that. This is, this is what this means. But beyond that even, you know, and I love the idea of sort of open forum or have language put on it. But I do think the actual budget document is putting enough that it's its own problem, just the physical presentation of it is its own problem. And so, and again, I don't want to put more work on it, but a, a sort of a budget summary with proper visuals that say, here's a block that, that represents these kinds of things. This is, this is what this is. And we'll put it in this kind of chunk, that kind of chunk. It's something that gives people a visual representation that this thing that feels like it's a lot, maybe isn't a lot. And it will really give them a sense of the limitations, especially, right? How much of that we just can't.
Like Amber's and Jessica's thing, like to the normal person, even to me still, makes a lot more sense than mine. Yes, right?
Yeah.
I, I do think that I could do something somewhat useful with the big budget if I could, could get it exported to itself.
I would agree with that. Because I could help with that too. I've done that, but it's like, it's that.
Yeah, it's kind of been like hinted at that this thing doesn't play well with that, but there's got to be some way, somebody's figured out how to. Because if I, I mean, we.
If you don't care about the format, I mean.
I could fix the problem.
It's not like we care if it's in Excel, like I think Amber had done it in Excel.
People left or are people a lot better than you?
Yeah, but we don't need any table writing, it's just, it's, I don't think it formats well, but I think she can export it, so.
If she could try and send it to me, just to see what it looks like. Okay, then maybe I'm just missing one.
You could just delete stuff you don't need.
Right, you get rid of the ugly rows. And I mean, I, I have even thought in the past, like having it sorted, like to color code all the lines that we say, like, we can't do anything about this.
Right.
And then white and fractional, right? And all those are red. And then you sort the budget by that with those words, like, hey, here's, you know, your $35 million, here's your $29 million something that's spent regardless, right? And it kind of helps visualize.
Because one of the questions at the town meeting, I don't know if you have somebody come up, but it was the bright question, it was like the bright question of a five months earlier.
Right.
It was, how much of this is discretionary?
Right.
That's a great question, right, not for that meeting, right? But if we can, if we can get people thinking that, if this is a recorded thing, if it's a nice little video of 15 minutes of somebody walking through a slideshow, that they can pull back up again when they want to and they can learn a little bit more that way. Right, this is just, this is kind of like the basics of trying to get people to, to your point. Spend five minutes on this side of the tape.
Right, right.
And I think it also, I think it also plays into more communication, more transparency, you know, just us being, you know, we're giving, we're giving you as much as we possibly can to help you understand what we see every time we look at it.
Yeah, no, I like, I like all that and I, I've got some ideas and I can assume working on some of this. And I also think it kind of, it sort of takes the pressure off in March too. Because at that point, like, I, I've almost taken that opportunity because I've got a captive audience, right? And I want to tell them everything I can tell them. But it's also sadly, most people, most, not all, I have had people that have told me I've changed their mind. But for the most part, when they walk in that, that gym or that auditorium in March, their mind's already made up. So if we can help give them the information to make up their mind either way in the preceding months, it's probably more effective than trying to shove six months' worth of budget work into a 20 minute presentation in March.
If we could get notice out, like way at a time, hey, the board's going to do presentation at this point, you know, in January, so that people can start figuring out here.
Yeah, I kind of like to do one, as much as like it's not huge, I'd like to do one like at the library. I think there's some value in, in like neutral term. I don't feel like that should matter, but I think, you know, we always got to turn out with the candidate meetings at the library. And then some people just feel like it's a more accessible space. So I can reach out, I think, I think we should try to fix some dates fairly soon. For, for maybe, maybe one of the, like second half of January, one in February, a couple of weeks before the public hearings.
I think advertising, you know, the headline is don't wait until March because I think to Ken's point, people show up on that day and they really don't understand the process and they think, oh, we're going to come here and ask some questions and learn about the budget. It's too late at that point.
And honestly, you know, I don't want to get crazy here, but I wonder if, if we're going to do sessions like this, and, and I think a video was a great idea. I wonder if we could get, I wonder if I could rope Tom into doing like a moderator's FAQ and help people understand what that day looks like a little bit better. Like a little bit of, hey, this is how the process goes and explain like, oh, when someone makes an amendment, then you're voting on whether or not to adopt the amendment. You're not voting on like that whole thing that comes up every year. I wonder, I wonder if Tom would be willing to, to try to, I'm sure it wouldn't be on camera, but I'll talk to him.
I think we should have a digital option, like, because we, we hear that a lot. Like if we were able to just like raise our hand and ask a question again, we can hear.
Yeah.
I agree.
And we could also have, we could have people submit things via email ahead of time too. Be like, hey, email the questions, use the subject line, you know, January 26 meeting. And we'll address those questions that night too.
Or even if you use the chat thing and one of us helps you and read a question. However, it works.
Yeah, I think you pick like a big time, like two weeks before the public hearing. You know, just in, in that timeframe, January 26, whatever. But, you know, that two weeks before the public hearing keeps it fresh in the minds. You know, because there's a month between the public hearing and, you know, the, the March meeting. And, you know, people go to the meeting, they think about it for a couple of days a week and then it's gone without the other things.
I need to throw water on the, on the public hearing, but I just, every year when I leave there, I wonder what it accomplished.
Yeah.
You know, so few people come and the crowd is, that does come is not always considered in decision making. So it's just kind of, I mean, we've seen that many, many times that people get up there and they say they, you know, they understand and they, and a bunch of community turns around, does something completely different. So, I mean.
Yeah, well.
So much matters.
And I think, yeah, I think it matters less if we're going to do a couple of these other sessions.
Yeah, I agree. I think doing, doing, almost doing your own is a better ver, and a better version.
What do you guys think about inviting Mark or whoever Mark would designate from the budget committee to have somebody there in case there were relevant questions for them or unless we just felt like we wanted to, people to be able to hear from somebody on that side or does that get too in the weeds?
I think we all know no matter what, Jerry's going to be there.
Yeah.
So he could probably answer any questions, but I mean, if we need, if we want to do a formal invitation to say, you know, would, would someone from the budget committee be willing to be here?
I mean, if you guys wanted to float that at your next meeting, just kind of be like, hey, we're kind of tentatively planning to do a couple of these sessions. Thinking maybe you'd like to have one of you there, keep us honest, whatever you want to say. And just see if they've gotten interested. And I mean, they'll say, no, I don't know. But like you said, Jerry would probably show up at any house.
Good, well, that sounds like a lot of work, but I think that's good, do some work.
Yeah, but to, to your point though.
Like, does it stave off harder longer work later?
Right.
Right, that's, I hope it does.
Right. Yep, and, yeah. My father-in-law has to say, and I don't always agree with him, but I like this one. He always said, he always says, well, if it doesn't work, we'll always think it should have. And I think the point is like, if we put in the effort, if our budget gets cut, it won't be for lack of effort. I think, I think that's, we should try everything we can and I think those are logical things to try.
Yeah, and, and sorry, not to be, of course, but if, like, if you look back on last year, and I'm looking at this, if you look back at last year, I think what we can say in part is that you would like to have had the opportunity to educate people better to see if there was a different outcome.
Right.
It's not that anybody didn't do a good job, right? You didn't know what you didn't know. Now we know.
Yep.
So.
Okay, so what, what's still, I know typically like retirements and that helps insurance. What else is still outstanding?
We will do retirements at the next meeting because they're not doing until December 1st. We have a chunk of money in there already so that we didn't have too much of a shock if we changed it. We have increases in here now that I need to talk to you about tonight and not publicly. But other than that, I can't think of anything else that is.
It's work, we're fairly homed in.
Yeah, yeah. Unless you have changes you want to make.
Not yet, but I guess that's the big homework assignment for the next two meetings is if you've got stuff that you, that you find in here, like why are we doing this? this?
I mean, I literally don't think, I think the hurdles are back in there.
Yes, they are.
And it's like, okay, that kind of stuff, it's.
Yeah.
Unless it's an absolute safety issue with the hurdles, it's just if they're ugly, everyone ever, that's one thing, or nets, or, you know, things like that that are, are more, I, I consider them more wants.
I think that's.
An absolute reason for it.
I think that's where our approach kind of found a little bit different this year, which was, we've lost a lot, let's at least get the kids and the staff what they need, you know, and if things are falling apart, and we're out there repeating, or if everyone else has this gorgeous, you know, easy-up tent with the big school logo, we have, like, the hard-freak version with Pepper.
I think, yeah, I've moved that right to the P I S L from the state meeting, everybody else is easy-out, so ours is harder, right?
Um, no, I'm just saying, their version versus what some other schools have is different.
I'm sure you.
So it's, it's, you know, could you say some of these are wants? They are wants, but where is the line that you cross to say it's need? You know, it's, we need to keep, can we have books falling apart in the classroom? Sure, that's, but is that the school we want? Or do we want to have new books to replace outdated information that we've been trying to replace for the past ten years?
I absolutely agree with you on educational materials. It just comes out to the, you know, it, it, it impacts the extra, the co-curriculars, probably more than anything else. Without cutting sports or, you know, pay-to-play or anything like that, those little things that, and, and sure, they're, they're piddly numbers compared to everything else, but every little bit, and, and, you know, I mean, I can even look at the musical instrument prepared, that kind of stuff. Yeah, it's like, it has to be, I mean, it, it's like a building, if you don't take care of the building, it just starts to fall apart, cost much more to fix it later, but, all right, so instead of this year, maybe next year, two years from now, whatever the case may be.
I, I just, we, not to argue, I'm just, just to push back a little, we, this, we've done this year after year after year after year, and, you know, you, the staff that we keep, and the staff that are loyal, and this, you know, to look at them, like, sorry, that can't get fixed again this year, to see that deflated book, it's like, our teachers are busting their butts, and we can just get them the tools that they need, and have, you know, that was a big part of our focus. We're not getting all the staff back, but let's try to take care of the, the needs of the staff and the kids that we do have in this building.
Yes, and I, I just want to emphasize that it really should be, you know, a need thing, based on, on more than anything else. If something can go longer, then let's, let's go longer than that. But if it is a need, absolutely, I mean, you know, we're just kind of drawing a line here, I think that stuff, you know, if it's a need and you can't teach your music class because the keyboard, or the trumpet, or the drums, gun, or whatever the case, you absolutely fix that stuff. But if it's like, well, slide on the trombone, it's a little sticky.
Yeah.
You know, that's kind of where it is.
Yeah, okay, I'll check, I'll have the admin go back through it, see if he can find any of those things.
And again, it's only a little bit of money, but.
Yeah.
I haven't asked to, and if this is more work than I think it is, feel free to say no. And, and I'm not honestly sure if it can be quantified, and I'm not sure of the stuff, but I would, so we have heard almost every year that I've presented in March, that we should have more bake sales, or, so, sometimes, that's literally, but, but sometimes it's been, you know, when I was a kid, there was more fundraising. I'd love to be able to quantify how much of that we do, because I know it's a lot. So, for example, the cross-country team got the opportunity to volunteer at the Reach the Beach Ragnorries. High school kids, if you've ever met any of them, are not a big fan of the morning, took shifts from midnight to ten a.m. to, to staff the transition area at River State Park, and they were awarded Reach the Beach two thousand, a two-thousand-dollar donation out of the kindness of their hearts, I wish I knew the name because I would call it out, but the company that the cross-country coach works for decided to match that. So the cross-country team raised four grand for themselves this year, and I know that there's a ton of teams and a ton of clubs that do that, and I would love to be able to say in these information sessions and at the March meeting, that we do fundraise, we do a lot, and our kids are out in the community, making this community a better place, we volunteer out constantly, too. But if there's any way to sort of quantify what, what the different clubs and teams have done for themselves, I think that'd be very useful.
Andy, that's a good companion to the cut list.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, yeah. And it's, you know, and I, I experienced it, too, you know, saw people at the touch of Trump thing, it brought my grandkids, I don't know, there weren't a lot of people there, it was a nasty windy day, so they probably didn't make much, but they were still up there doing it, you know, and I could go for the crochet club, too.
And crochet, I think.
But, you know, they all, we, we realized that they all do this stuff.
Right.
And we also had a discussion that, you know, I, I think right now they're going around the camp with the calendars for the end-of-trip, right?
Environment.
And environmental, right. But, you know, there's all this stuff going on, we've also talked about the community, the fundraise to death, basically, you know, where it's like, God, here comes another one, you know, that type of thing.
Palace does a ton, and organizes it for us.
Palace, too.
Yeah, I'm, I'm making notes to get as much, even, even, we don't have it all, at least, it's just the examples, things you can do, yeah.
All right, um, let's see here, so anything else, so like you said, the homework is to continue your deep dive and see if there's anything else that you want to add in, cut, question for next time.
And we, we should try to do as much as we can next time, because your meeting on the seventeenth is the last, the budget goes to the M E C two days after that, so if we made a lot of changes on the seventeenth, we would get them done in time for the M E C meeting, so as much as we can get done, that'd be great.
Okay, so any more questions, comments, discussions that we need to have on the budget right now? I'm just going to say, like, I've been, I don't see anything, and I only mention certain things because they're there, and maybe they are discretionary. But, I mean, there's nothing that I can see. And then more to the point, there's things that I'd like to see in there that aren't in there, so. Okay, um, Melanie asked last time if we could discuss strategic planning a bit tonight, so I think that's pretty much our last, thanks.
I do have these, because I'm a paper person, I know that I'm a paper person. I'm just, extras, is actually, uh, yeah, I emailed it. So basically, and, Andy, I said December third, but whatever works for the December meeting, like, we have time to work on this, I just thought we could individually work on it a little bit, and then, so I kind of just drew this up really fast, but strategic planning, when you think about it, I know a lot of people get scared, but basically, you want to think about standing on a mountain from like thirty thousand feet up. This is not like a teen tale thing of a book report, it is like, this is where we're headed, this is what we want to do, and this is our outcome, and then all those little details, it's kind of like what, what we could do on our workshop, or whatever we call it, once this is derived. Usually, every strategic plan that I've done, you start with a mission statement, by any means you do not need to use mine, that was like the two, and it just throws something together to show you, an idea or an example, it's really just a couple of sentences, it's not a paragraph of the Pepper School Board mission is what, we say it all the time, like, adequate education, wonderful teachers, physically responsible, so I left you guys plenty of room, just to give you an idea, so you guys could work, and you don't need to write sentences, you can bullet point some things, and then we can create that together at another meeting. And then I only chose one out of that spreadsheet, I think you could do one at a time, it's easier, and everyone keeps talking about communication, so I chose to create a district communication plan, which is what we talked about a lot tonight, so, and usually, every time I've done a strategic plan, you literally sit there and brainstorm, so I left you some spaces, and first you think about what are the challenges we have as a district with communication, and you can literally write that out. Our budget was slashed, people didn't understand, like, you can write down whatever you need, and what's working good, like, our one-call-now system, people are used to, that's, you can put that there, and ideas to improve communication, like, we already listed a whole bunch tonight, we want to have, like, town calls, Zoom slash confirmation sessions, we're going to get our Facebook, those are like the kind of ideas we would write down. A lot of this we already discussed. And then the whole idea of it is, the next time, we'll all come here with our bullet points, and we will check off one of ours, one of our goals, and an outcome, and have a mission statement. It's really not hard, it's really.
So I think we do have a mission statement, too, so.
I figured we did, but I don't know where it is.
I'm pretty sure I found it once, but if I can, I'll bring it to the next meeting, and we can decide if we want to reuse it or if we want to.
And then anyone who hasn't done this before, I did just pop in on the very last one, a goal and an outcome, just to kind of show you, and it could even apply to school, but, like, one of the goals was creatively pursue avenues to hire support and retain qualified, mission-oriented employees, I guess we can use that like any business, right? And the outcome was just like, we're going to be an employer of choice, we're going to have competitive pay and benefits, a culture of support, like, it's not huge paragraphs, it's, this is our goal, because this is what we want, and then once you have a strategic plan, that's when you sit there and you're like, okay, Carrie's going to do the Facebook page, we're going to push out all the remaining notes, we're going to tell them what we voted yes on, what we're going to come back on, it's really not as hard as what a lot of people would be.
It might be, for people who haven't done this, it might be helpful to go online and look at some other school districts, and look at their mission statements, because sometimes, like Melanie just said, it helps to bullet point, so just put some words down, and it'll just sort of spark people, like, wow, that, that's something that's really important to me, and you come with ten different things, and then you settle on a sentence, and say, okay, what can we agree on the most important aspects of our mission statement? Keywords.
The key, I think, is, you're talking about scaffolding, right? Everything has to flow back up to that mission statement, right? So, so we have to make sure that what, what we actually even put down on the objective level, that we can, we can trace that back up to something, so that's, I admit, partly through people, the mission statement is this kind of high-flying thing over here that they write, and then look at it, right? That's a mistake, because if it's not in your mission statement, then you're not doing the things to do, so.
And if you look at the Excel thing, it's in our drive, I know our board goals one, we kind of already have them there, like, I started to write it, and like, no, we're going to all do this together, but it's there. We have our C B A, our PAROs, we have our teachers, like, we have that, our culture survey, we have communication, we have every single one of these, like, it's, so it's really just, what is everybody's words, and we're going to.
This looks great, this is a great start, thank you for putting this together. Can we put this on for next time, but as last and as, like, tentative, like, if we have time, if we don't have time, we'll get to the, to the second December meeting? I just don't, I mean, I feel like next meeting is a really variable, where we should, we could get in the, we hit the budget and stick to that for two and a half hours, or we can, you know, spend twenty minutes and go, hey, we're ready.
Can I ask also, is your, is, is it fun here to have these, as we're working on documents in the drive, where we can all just kind of go in and.
We can definitely do that.
Take it actively, and I feel like that might be helpful.
I didn't know it was easier where you and I are going to sit, going through the whole process, I didn't know if it was easier to, like, break it up into small chunks and hand people paper and have them write bullet points, so we can all work together for, like, twenty minutes on a meeting, but I can create, we could do a write as a page two in that Excel thing.
Yeah.
If you wanted us to.
So if we kind of buy Google Doc, we could all take that, and on a random Thursday night, all three of us would have to, are we breaking the rules?
You can share thoughts, you can have discussion, you can't make, you can't conduct board business.
Okay, so if I'm, if I'm putting bullet points in, you can.
Sorry, you know, Ken starts going, oh, Andy, I like that, and Melanie says, no, I want to change it to this, you're going to make a meeting.
Okay.
At the same time that you're, just, I will land your own bullets, and just keep it like that.
I think that would be helpful, and we could use the electronic one during meetings, too. And then you could still kind of do it piecemeal, like, if you, if you made this the document, right? And then we go through this next, next meeting, and then you're going to, what.
That's what I've done.
The next page is not going to be, but then just go in and add another page in the archive, until we can kind of keep expanding it, until it's time to wrap it all up.
And then just keep in mind, anything that you see is, becomes a public document, so, somebody might say, like, hey, I want to see what you're working on so far, and that would need to be made available.
Okay.
So, and we can't say, like, oh, it's terrible, it's just notes, it's like, it has to be transparent. And to be fair, that is how I, the last route that I've done, we've got to a meeting and here's this, and people save them, evening after meeting, so that they can go back through when they're actually reading it, but digitally, somebody has a laptop, and they do on their own time, and I forward this, very, very helpful. It's really not, it's really not that bad if you break into chunks.
Yeah, thanks for taking this on, because I really think that we can do this, and I think, like you said, I think a lot of the work's done, between things that we've already done, and, and the C I P, and everything like that, like.
Look at how much our meeting you guys already did on the meeting.
Right, okay, I feel a lot better about doing this, rather than going out and spending money, and then spending a whole Saturday, or whatever, I think we can do this. Very good.
I want to bring something up, this is not on the agenda, I'm just going to throw it out there for people to think about, it's probably too late to even suggest it for next year, because we're pretty far along the process, but I meant to bring it up, and I think I missed a meeting, um, this is something that, so when I was at the School Board Association. Thank you, Doug, so, the School Board of the Year from last year presented like they always do, and, well, a thing they did that just jumped out to me, like, why couldn't everybody do that, obviously, there's some labor, but one of the things they did was start a daycare for only for employees' kids, and they structured it in such a way that once it was up and running, it was, they basically charged what would cover the cost of the program, so it didn't end up costing the taxpayers any money, and they've seen an uptick in retention and recruitment of new teachers. And it just made all the sense in the world to me, if there's a space, like, obviously, like, this takes some planning, it's not a thing we're going to throw together in two months, but, you know, maybe not for next school year, but the following school year, it seems like a thing where if you want to attract young new teachers and get them to stick around, if, I mean, I can't remember what they sent a cost for a kid, but it was like twenty-five percent of what they would have paid anywhere else in the community, because they weren't, nobody was making profit off it, it was basically a benefit of working there, and I just think that's something that we should consider.
It's so funny you said that, the last strategic plan I just finished, that agency, that is exactly what they're doing, because they are so short-staffed, and they cannot get direct service providers to work with these families, they, that is one of the things that they're going to do, their strategic plan is to have employee daycare at, at just the cost, because there's so many people who are on wait lists for a day camp, or it's so expensive.
Yeah.
It's space and money, that's.
It's space and money, yeah.
Right.
But a lot of people thinking that, living at a hospital, they have theirs, too.
So I think it's worth looking at down the road, but, again, any way that we can get good motivated teachers to come here and stay here is, is worth it. Okay, I think that's the end of the agenda. We do have non-public. C?
And A.
C and A?
Yeah.
All right, and the board has seen the new national session, in accordance with New Hampshire R S A, ninety-one dash A colon three, Roman numeral two, small, smaller C and A, A is the dismissal, promotion compensation, or discipline of an employee, or the investigation of any charges against him or her, and C is matters which are discussed in public would likely affect the reputation of any person other than a member. Enroll call vote to enter non-public at eight twenty-four. Ken?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Ian?
Yes.
Melanie?
Yes.
And who, yes?